Thank you for tuning in today. I apologize for the late start. It's been, it's been a, almost, almost three weeks since we've had a town hall because of, because of the coronavirus which I contracted and I, I have to confess that it was pretty bad. Nevertheless, I'm back to be, I'm glad to be back and hoping to be able to convey a message to you that is to why I am running for Utah Attorney General. I'm going to put my glasses on so that I can see if there's any, see if there's any questions. I'm running for Utah Attorney General for one basic reason, and I'd like to be able to frame that if I can for just a minute or two, and then I'd like to be able to take your questions. And I think that Michael or Sheri, whoever's hosting this meeting will, they'll take your questions if you put it in the chat box. You know, our founders gave us an executive branch, excuse me, a legislative branch to tell us what was against the law. And they gave us an executive branch to enforce that law. And, and they also gave us a judiciary to keep those two powers in harmony with each other. But the, the founders were so absolutely paranoid about government encroaching upon their liberties that there's one significant power that the government never received from the people. And that was, that was the power for, for them, for the government to find a fellow citizen guilty of a crime and to remove their liberty. They kept that, they kept that power to themselves in the form of the jury. And it was something that despite the fact that in the, when, in the Constitutional Convention, we had federalists and anti-federalists and people of all different kinds of ideas, the one thing over which they agreed was that if we're going to keep our, this government that we're going to create within the bounds of its own constitution, we have to be able to have a jury trial where people, not government, determine the guilt or innocence of its fellow citizens. And that's something that has been a hallmark of American, of the American criminal justice system since its inception. Of course, we got it from, from England. That changed around the Civil War when we started to introduce something that was a radical concept back then, something that people viewed as a real corruption in the system, and that was something called the plea bargain. Which of course, we're well aware of today because, you know, the plea bargain has replaced the jury trial as the central pillar of our criminal justice system. But back in eighteen, in mid 1860s, when we started plea bargaining cases, people look at that and said, this, you know, this is not right because every time we give more power to the executive, we take away power from people. Well, we got more used to plea bargains and more used to plea bargains and more used to plea bargains. Until we get to 1969, it wasn't until 1969 that the United States Supreme Court actually ruled that plea bargains were legal. But by that time, and by that time, we were plea bargaining 75% of our cases. Well, you, you fast forward the clock from 1969 until today. And what's significant about that is that most people who are practicing law today and most citizens who involve themselves in the legal process weren't doing so before 1969. And so, you know, we're, we're getting really the roots from when, from whence we came. Because today, instead of having 75% of our cases go resolved by plea bargain and 25 by a jury trial, we're, we're settling over 99% of our cases by a plea bargain. And that should trouble every one of us because what that means is this. Number one, it means that every time we take away, every time, every time we give a plea bargain, me as the elected, I as the elected prosecutor don't have to prove the allegations that I make. Now, the jury was always a check because if the government wanted to make an allegation and the people wouldn't buy it, that preserved our liberties. But now what occurs is that because, because we plea bargain almost every case, we, we charge cases with the eye towards settling by a plea bargain. And so, we, 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 we charge things in a way that almost punishes people for exercising their constitutional rights against having, against having. Significant. I want to read you, if I can, just a couple of quotes from our founders. John Adams said, "Representative government and the trial by jury are the heart and lungs of liberty. Without them, we have no other fortification against being ridden like horses, worked like cattle, and fed and clothed like swine and hounds." James Madison wrote, "Trial by jury is essential to secure the liberty of the people as any one of the pre-existent rights of nature." And it was Thomas Jefferson who famously said, "I consider the trial by jury as the only anchor yet imagined by man by which a government can be held to the." Now, I'm the Utah County Attorney. I'm the elected prosecutor in Utah's second largest county. As system has evolved, has granted me the authority to investigate anyone I want to investigate, charge anyone I want to charge, give a plea bargain to anyone I want to give, to whom I want to give a plea bargain, and I have 100% complete immunity for my actions. And I'm here to say that that needs reforming, that no one man or woman in America should have that kind of power, which is why I'm running for Utah Attorney General. I'm not running for Utah Attorney General to have more power. I'm running for Utah Attorney General so that I can try and reform Utah's criminal justice system in a way that serves us rather than the system running us. And, and I'm here to raise a warning voice that unless we get our criminal justice system in balance with what it should be, we in fact will lose our freedoms. And, and, and that's a, that's a hard message to deliver, but it's a true message. And, and that's what I want, that's what I want to do. I want to reduce the number of plea bargains we have. I want to increase the number of, of jury trials that we have so that our citizens are determining guilt or innocence, not the government. And then we also need to find a way to, to redefine how we punish people. We have, we have 85 or 90% of the people in our jails are not violent offenders. And so, we're, we're putting them in, you know, because we're so focused on punishing them, we are not looking at really what is the best for society as far as societal protection. We need to find different solutions for dealing with nonviolent offenders. Those are reasons why I'm running for Attorney General. Now admittedly, Sean Reyes, our current Attorney General, by all accounts, is a nice man, a good man, a decent man. And so, someone says, well, why, why are you running against the current Attorney General? Well, I'm running against our Attorney General because I've been the Utah County Attorney now for almost 15 months, and I haven't even had as much as a phone call from him. I'm, I'm the elected prosecutor in Utah's second largest county, and I'm trying to reform a system, and at the top, we have no support. We need an Attorney General who will take charge of reforming our criminal justice system. And so, with that, I, I see that there, it looks to me like there are some questions. I'm going to pop to the questions here and, and I'll apologize that my dog's barking in the background, but you know, that's, that's what you get when you get a home studio. Joseph asks me, "What do you know about the misuse of?" And then it stops. So maybe Joseph, if you could type that question again. Or, or let, let, someone, I'm going to unmute Joseph. You can just ask the question. Go ahead.
For some reason, I can't, I rewrote the question and it won't go through. But lately in the news, there's been something about the misuse of funds in the state of Utah, especially by the Justice Department. What do you know, anything about that?
Thank you, Joseph. Well, what I know, basically what, the same thing that you've read about in the newspaper. But I will tell you that my experience of federal grant money is this. For, for about 15 years, when I was working in legal reform work in, in Ukraine, I had a fair amount of opportunity to work with federal grant money. And, and federal money i- is given for a specific purpose. And if you don't spend that money for a specific purpose, then, then you're violating federal law. And i- it appears, from what I've read, that the, that, that the state of Utah got caught replacing its own money with federal money and thereby not using the federal money for, for which, for its intended purpose. And, and, you know, for the, for the US Attorney's Office to sue the state of Utah, you know, obviously the state of Utah will have its day in court, but I would suggest that there's problems there. I mean, I, it, it's concerning. And I, but, but again, I don't know, I don't know many of the facts or just to read what I've read in, I just know what I've read in newspapers. I wish I had a better answer for you. From John, "Since retail theft is a nonviolent crime, how do you envision those crimes being handled?" Well, John, I want to make it clear that when I say we need to redefine, that we need to look at how we deal with nonviolent offenders, I'm not suggesting that we not punish nonviolent offenders. People need to have, but that's one, but that's one problem with our current criminal justice system. Because you get charged in this criminal justice system, you, you're given your lawyer, which you have a right to because you have the threat of incarceration. It will be five or six or seven months before that process will find you guilty or not guilty. And by the time that's occurred, we've spent so much more money on, on judges and defense attorneys and prosecutors and probation, probation officers. And, and you've lost seven months of, of time. My theory on, on those kinds of nonviolent offenses is this, that the best punishment is swift punishment, that the best punishment is early punishment that will, that, that will, that will burn you hard enough that you never want to do it again, but which will allow you to have a life in the future that won't be tainted by a silly mistake that you've made. Now, I've designed a program in Utah County called the Pre-Filing Diversion Program that, that allows me to do just that. We, we design, we design a punishment, it's a stiff punishment. We require swift restitution to the, to the victims. And then we allow a way out for people to not, to proceed and not have a criminal record. So, you know, to, to put that down to one sentence, what I believe is this. Nonviolent offenders need to be dealt with swiftly and, and with enough force that, that they never really want to do it again. But that, but that, but that doesn't mean necessarily putting them in jail because jail doesn't really teach them, in my mind, what they need to do to be a contributing member of society. There's a lot of other things that they can do to help us rather than just us housing them. All right. Bruce says, "Wouldn't requiring a jury trial for everyone really slow down the justice system?" Well, Bruce, my feeling, i- i- in his current stance, the answer is yes. It would slow down the criminal justice system. But that's the point, is that the people are a check on what the executive's doing. And, and, and what that really means is, is that maybe as the executive, we need to be finding different ways of resolving our cases. Instead of, instead of sending every case through currently, let, let's find ways that we can resolve cases with, with, with regard to, to how we charge them. And how I'm dealing with it in Utah County is this. Instead of saying, okay, what did this fellow do? And let's charge this person with everything that this person has done. I'm saying, what do we need as society for our protection? Because that's a very different question. Because if, if John Doe has committed 15 crimes, and we're so fixated on prosecuting John Doe for all 15 of those crimes, then we have, we have one set of charges. But if society really only needs John Doe to be prosecuted for one charge, then we can prosecute John Doe for one charge and we can get through it much more efficiently. And so, to answer your question briefly, the way we do it now, it would tremendously slow the system. But, but there are simple things that we can do to, to keep the system running. Because I will tell you that the biggest threat to our system isn't the slowness of the system. The biggest threat to our system is losing the right to a criminal, losing the right to a jury trial. And it's one thing to have a jury trial right in, in name. It's another thing to have it in practice. And one thing, I, I spent 15 years in Ukraine doing criminal justice reform. One thing I found, learned about the Ukrainian system was this. They have the same right to the jury trial that we do, yet there's never been a jury trial in the history of that country, not one. And that's, and the reason for that is because no one knows how to do one. And, and there's no, there's no, there's no culture of a jury trial. Once we turn over to government the, the decision of who's guilty and who, and who's not, and just get rid of juries, or make juries so painful that people don't want to do them, that's when our freedoms will be really, really curtailed. His second question is, "How can you change the plea bargain in the state level? Isn't that something that's more of a national issue?" It actually goes the other way, Bruce. It's more of a local issue because it, because plea bargains are something that occur at the local level. And the, the role of the Attorney General is that by state law, the Attorney General has supervisory powers over county attorneys. And so, what, what we, what you do is you simply say, here's, here are the standards by which we can plea, which we plea bargain cases, and you give them, you give enough latitude and enough control for, for, for local control. But, but you've got, there's a lot that you can do as the Attorney General at state level for plea bargaining. And, and if nothing more, educating the population about the evils of plea bargain is something that, that, that we ought to be doing. Number three, is there any, is there anything that the governor's doing now with COVID-19 that is illegal? I, I have to confess, and I don't mean this as a cop out, but for the last three weeks, I have been literally flat in bed with COVID-19, and I'm not really aware of what the government, nor have I cared frankly. Just because I've been, I've been trying, trying to recover from it myself. It, it's a balancing act. I know that the governor is one of the only governors in the nation that has not enforced a state, a state, you know, a fully statewide order. And I, I frankly, I'm grateful that we don't have a statewide order. I think we need to use our best judgment. I need to, I think we need to be smart, but I think we need to preserve our freedoms. All right. Michael Gutu sent, who's with me, sent a, a survey. If you, if you click on that and take this survey while you're listening, I would appreciate that because it, it, it's something that I'll address and maybe not today, but in other, in other town hall meetings. Stephen asks, "How have you reduced plea bargains in Utah County as county attorney?" That's a great question, Stephen. Let me give you as, as quick an answer as I can. First, I, I worked with the state legislature to change, to, to, to change some of the jurisdictional requirements of the law so that I could file Class A misdemeanors, so that I could file Class A misdemeanors in, in, as Class B misdemeanors in justice court and simply say, you know, that's, 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 there is no plea bargain because that's really what, that's where, where it is. And so, what we've done is we've altered our charging practices so that we're charging what we want to, what we want to try at trial. There's two ways to charge people. One, you, you, you know, you charge clear up here so that you can maybe get a plea bargain down here. Well, now what we're doing is we're charging at a lower level with the expectation that if they want a trial, we'll, we'll take it to a trial. If they want to plead guilty, then they can plead guilty. And that's, that's what we're doing in Utah County. Wendy asks, "Follow Bruce's question number three. What is the role of the Attorney General in a state of emergency? Would the AG advise the governor? Are there any concerns with geo-tracking at the state borders that the governor has just ordered? Everyone says it's voluntary, but the order doesn't appear to state that it's voluntary." Well, you know, it's, it's, the, the role of the Attorney General is very similar to the role of the county attorney with a county health department order. And that is that the health department can order something, but, but they can't enforce it without the county attorney. And, and so, I, I, I have that role now, and that simply is, you know what? If, if, if there's something that as the county attorney or, that now that I feel is unconstitutional, then my, my, my obligation to the Constitution is what would prevent me from enforcing that kind of a law. And if I'm the Utah Attorney General, it's the same thing. And routinely, we decline to prosecute cases where we believe that a person's constitutional rights have been violated. Because quite frankly, my, my duty is to the Constitution and not to enforcement of a law that, that is of questionable constitutionality. Okay, from Kent, "The issue of the grant money is for use in 2000 to 2009 to 2011, not under the current administration." That's accurate. I don't believe that anything in the federal lawsuit has anything to do with the players that are there now. From Aaron, "What is the AG's role in criminal justice reform versus the legislature versus local prosecutors?" Well, frankly, Aaron, it's going to take all of us. My role thus far has been to be as vocal as I can in changing things in Utah County, but we're not going to reform the criminal justice system the way we need to unless we have an Attorney General who will work with the legislature to get the laws changed that will free up our ability to make these changes. And quite frankly, that's what made me decide to run for Attorney General. I spent a good share of my time over at the legislature in, 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 in February and March, in the latter part of January. And I was so astounded, not only have I never had a phone call from Sean Reyes in my 15 months of office, I never saw him at the legislature. And I, I just thought, you know what? There needs to be someone here that's, that's pushing this train. And, but I'll tell you that, quite frankly, the, the thing that we need to change the most in our criminal justice system isn't the laws. It's not anything more, I mean, the, the biggest thing we need to change in our criminal justice system is the mindset of the participants in it. We need to understand that the people in our system are some, is someone's mother and father, son and daughter, husband, wife, and they're going to come back and live among us at some point. And we need to recognize the humanity that exists in every one of the people in our criminal justice system. And that's, that's something that, that we absolutely need to, to change across the board at every level.
We're not out for revenge, only justice.
Say that again, Cynthia.
We're not out for revenge, only justice.
It's, it's, that's true. And, and I would go one step further and say, we, we have to be about community protection. Yeah, we get caught up on just, on the concept of justice and it's a, it, you know, it's a, it's a slippery slope for us. All right, Kent says, thank you for your comments, Cynthia. Kent says, "Aren't diversion agreements upfront? Take the constitutional system of justice out of the equation? Isn't it taking all the power out of the hands of the judge and jury and give it to the prosecutor, and give all, give the prosecutor all power as, as a consequence? Don't an abundance of diversion agreements just create new administrations at a level of the executive branch?" That's a very good question and a very fair question. There are two kinds of diversion agreements, Kent and I. There, I, I'm thrilled to say that there are 52 people in this meeting, and so I don't, I can't see Kent's picture or look at it, but, and try to look, look you in the eye. There are two kinds of diversion agreements. The first kind of diversion agreements happen in court with the court's regulation. And the other kind is what's called a pre-filing diversion agreement, which is the kind that I have implemented, well, I do both in Utah County. But diversion agreements are where the prosecutor uses the prosecutorial discretion to decide what to charge, if to charge, how to charge. And it's not taking necessarily any more power than the prosecutor already has because the, what it does is it recognizes the prosecutor, the prosecutor's duty is the keeper of the gate. I want to say that the criminal justice system is a bit like a food court at a mall. You have, you know, you have a judge, you have a defense attorney, you have a probation department, you have prosecutors, you have substance abuse people. And, and, and that system can hold only so many people. And, and that mall, that food court can only, you know, it, it can handle one school bus of hungry, hungry high school wrestlers very easily. But if seven school buses show up, then everything bogs down. And the role of the county attorney is, is not to send everyone into the food court as quickly as you can. The role of the county attorney is to recognize that the, that the criminal justice system has limits, and you send into the criminal justice system those that require the most from the system. And you, and you, you give sack lunches to those that, that aren't as bad. And so, I, I'd be happy to have an in-depth discussion on diversion agreements, but quite frankly, a diversion agreement does highlight the power of a prosecutor. Prosecutors in our system have tremendous amounts of power. Now, the way I have administered the pre-filing diversion program does not create a new administrative level of executive branch of government. We have, we have done our, we have done our pre-filing diversion program with, with no additional money. We charge those who, we have a private provider who, who monitors them, and those who participate in it pay $30 a month to be in that program. And on a sliding scale, if you don't have the money to pay, then, then, then there's a portion of that $35 that everybody else pays that goes to pay for those that can't. Kent, I don't know that I really gave you a very good answer, but I'd be happy to discuss it with you when we can discuss it more fully. Grant, it's nice to see you again. I think that we last saw each other at Orem High School. And I think that, I've thought about you a lot because I think that you were going to send a case to my office, and I'm not sure that you ever did, but let's make sure, let, let's, let's make sure that, I, I want to make sure that, that you got taken care of. But it says, it says, it seems to, Grant says, "It seems to make something of a difference if, if..." Oh, we just, I just lost, it seems, it, it difference if the victim of the crime is society or if the victim is an individual of business. The victim of multiple crimes wants all the crimes you prosecuted, doesn't she? I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we have to recognize that if you are a living, breathing person, you are, you are devastated when you have a loss of a crime, whether it's a theft, whether it's an embezzlement, whether it's sexual abuse, whether it's some other kind of bodily injury crime. And, and quite frankly, those are the crimes that matter the most. If you go and you take the survey that, you know, that link, that's what that goes, that, that's what that question goes to. Because quite frankly, right now, if you prioritize the crimes by, you know, murder, sex abuse, elder abuse, and you, you go through those kinds of crimes and go through crimes against people down to crimes against society, so to speak, I'll tell you that about 70% of the crimes that prosecution offices in this state prosecute right now are crimes against society, not crimes against people. And, and that's a misappropriation of our resources because I'm telling you, there's a lot more than 30% of the crimes that are being committed that are against people. We just aren't prosecuting them for a variety of reasons, and that needs to change. All right. Cynthia has, has raised her hand for a question. Cynthia, can someone unmute Cynthia?
Whoops. I think we both tried at the same time. Sorry.
It was just my comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Steve Markham, "Recently, the Utah County Commissioners raised their portion of our property taxes by 66%. Their excuse was to give the county departments had to have more money based on budgets and demands than the county heads. As county attorney, did your department ask for more money like so many other departments?" Stephen, my, 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 I asked for a lot more money. And I asked for a lot more money because I wanted 15, wanted and asked and persuaded and will defend that I, that I wanted 15 new prosecutors. And that's because I want to stop plea bargaining so many. And that's because I want to stop plea bargaining so many cases and I want to, uh, try more cases. My, 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 my prosecutors had on average 275 felony cases each per year. You do the math on that with every one of them having, you know, not every, most of them having victims. There's just no way to give the kind of attention to the kind of cases. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to do is, is, is give my lawyers more, more, um, bandwidth, more time to be able to look at their cases. But I'm also quite frankly, looking at filing fewer cases. Uh, because there's a lot of cases that we file, uh, that don't need to be, they just don't need to be filed. We can handle them in other ways. Okay, Kent, my understanding is that Salt Lake DA's office and the Utah County Attorney's Office have been losing their talented attorneys over the past couple of years. Further, the Utah County, Utah Attorney General's Office has lost many attorneys, merely because their pay was higher at the DA's office and the salaries were recently significantly increased at Utah County Attorney's Office. How can you stop the exodus of talented attorneys from the Utah Attorney General's Office? An issue that your current office has also suffered from. Well, first off, my office, I've lost two lawyers out of 50 in my 15 months. And so I, 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 I think that, um, that's not necessarily accurate to say that we have an exodus of people. We, we, we've actually, I'll say this, that when we began hiring for new lawyers, Salt Lake County District Attorney's Office received seven applications. They gave four offers and received three acceptances. We had 65 applications, uh, and, and extended about 16 offers and, and had 15 acceptances. And so, I mean, we, we're not suffering for a lack of talent in the, in the Utah County Attorney's Office. There has been an exodus from the Utah Attorney General's Office. And, and, you know, how can I stop the exodus of talented attorneys? Well, you know, there's lots of ways. Uh, people don't work just for money. People work, uh, for the satisfaction of their job that you've got to have, you've got to get them buy-in. You've got to help, help them to feel like what they're doing matters. And quite frankly, I think a lot of that goes to the policy, the larger policies of those who are running the offices. The, um, from Kent, your explanation for pre-filing diversions and court-approved diversions appears to also justify plea bargains. It seems like just another selection in the food court, a selection other than a jury trial. Diversion agreements as part of your platform seems the antithesis of your arguments against plea bargaining. How can you reconcile that? Well, you have to reconcile it by understanding that, um, in my lifetime, we're not going to go from 99% plea bargains down to 0% plea bargains. It, it, you know, this is a problem that, this is a problem that has taken us 145 years, uh, to build. And it's going to take us a few decades to, to, to reduce it. And so, you know, what, what you've got to do is, is figure out, uh, what cases should have a jury trial, what cases are not as serious, that you can resolve in a different way. Because, um, you know, it, it's not like, it's not like you can design a system, uh, it's not like you're building a vacant building and then everyone moves in. It's like you're building, it's like the Salt Lake Airport where you're, you have to build an airport while planes are landing and taking off. And so you, uh, to do it responsibly, um, you know, what I'm trying to do is, 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 uh, increase, increase the capacity in the district court of jury trials. And to do, and to do that, I'm, I'm diverting cases outside of the district court to the justice courts, also diverting them to the pre-filing diversion program. And, and I'm doing, trying to do it, quite frankly, as responsibly as possible. But, uh, you know, I'll, I'll agree with you that the, the two seem to be, uh, not in harmony with each other, but you know, it's, uh, I, I don't claim to be perfect. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, um, do it as responsibly as I can. $35 a month is crazy from Colin. I'm not sure if that's because it's so expensive or because it's so low, uh, because it's so inexpensive. I'm not quite sure, but I will say, uh, it's a sliding scale. If you're, if you're, if you can't afford to pay it, then you pay zero. What has, what has Attorney Ju, Attorney General Reyes done right? And what did John Swallow do right? I'm not here to tell you that Sean Reyes nor John Swallow are bad people. I, I, they're, they're both good people, they're both good lawyers. Uh, I think that Sean Reyes's work on the Underground Railroad is very laudable. Uh, I, I, my, and I think, I think it's important work and I think he's done a great job with it. My criticism of that, however, is that you don't have to be the Attorney General to do that work on the Underground Railroad. And, and, and I, and I believe that it has diverted him from that, from the work. And what did Attorney General John Swallow do right? Quite frankly, I think that John Swallow, um, was in office for such a little amount of time and, and the entirety of his time was engrossed in, in the controversy that, that took him from office. And at the same time, I was not living in the state of Utah. So I, I, you know, I, uh, I'm, I, I can't comment on that very, very accurately or confidently. From Stephen Markham, if you're elected as Attorney General, what happens to our county attorney? Will someone take over from you with your mindset? Does a special election have to be called for Utah County Attorney? Let me address that in kind of a, um, a larger way. And that, and that's to say this, my purpose in running for Attorney General is not to seek higher office. That's not my motivating factor. I am seeking higher office, but I'm seeking higher office to try to reform the entire state. I am very happy being the Utah County Attorney. And I view this as an opportunity for me to speak to 52 Utahns, for example, in this delegate meeting, uh, as to some of the problems in our system. If I'm elected Attorney General, uh, there will be an appointment made, uh, for, for someone to fill my, to fill, fill the, the remaining time until, until the next election in 2022. There will not be a special election. I can, I can assure you that, uh, I'll do everything. If I'm elected Attorney General, I won't leave my post as Utah County Attorney until I'm certainly assured, uh, that, that whoever selects my replacement is going to select someone that's got my mindset. Absolutely. Okay, Grant, uh, thank you, Grant, for your comment. Grant says, the fact of the matter is that prosecutors have a huge amount of discretion and therefore power. What David's talking about, though, is exercising that discretion in a different way. When cases are diverted pre-filing, that, that does free up the resources of the court to conduct more trials. Thanks, thank you for your comment, Grant. The, um, and Kent, thank you for your comment there. And Kent saying that the money, people left the AG's office for money, certainly money matters. You know, if, if a prosecutor in Utah County and a prosecutor in Salt Lake County and a prosecutor at the Attorney General's Office ought to be making similar money. And that, you know, I, that's something, if I'm, if I'm elected, then that would be certainly, that would rise to the top of my list to try to figure out how to, how to, uh, to work that. You know, other than criminal justice reform, what else would you like to accomplish as the Attorney General? Well, first off, I, I, I want to say that the role of the Attorney General is not simply to be the, the, the agency lawyer for all the state agencies. And that's, that's how the office has been handled for the last several decades. I, I believe that my role as the Attorney General is to represent, i- 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 is to be the people's Attorney General. And that is to be, while, while you have to wear the hat of representing state agencies of being, of being, you know, really try to work with state agencies to help people rather than just the other way around. I also would like to see some real serious work done on our public lands issue. Because I think that we've missed an opportunity with President Trump in office for us to really get, uh, some agreements with the federal government over, over how we deal with, um, our public lands. You know, it, it's often, when I was the county attorney in Juab County 20 years ago, I fought the, the federal government, uh, a lot over wilderness and roads. And, uh, I spent a lot of time out in Utah's west desert, Calio and Partone and, and in the deep creek mountains, uh, trying to, uh, defend, uh, the, the United States designation of wilderness out there. And always, I found it ironic that, uh, our heritage, the pioneers that settled our state, were such great stewards over lands for, you know, 100 and some odd years that someone on the east coast wanted to make a wilderness out of it. They cared for it so well. Had they trashed it, they wouldn't want to make a wilderness of it. And I, and I, I believe, uh, that we've got to get a handle on our public lands. And the, the truth is that, that 67 or 8% of Utah is owned by the federal government. And, and most of our property taxes, the vast majority of our property taxes are paid for by, by the private sector. And we need to be able to find a way to get more money for the, more, more, more payment in lieu of taxes from the federal government. What, what will you, what will you, what will you do on day one as Attorney General? Well, Stephen, if I'm elected Attorney General on day one, uh, I'll start meeting with county attorneys. Uh, because county attorneys, the elected county attorneys are on the front lines of, of what's occurring, uh, in our criminal justice system. And, you know, I've served as a county attorney under three attorneys general. I was a Juab County Attorney under Jan Graham. I was the Juab County Attorney under Mark Shertliff. Now I've been, and now I'm the Utah County Attorney under Sean Reyes. I felt like Jan Graham had my back and I felt like, uh, Mark Shertliff had my back. But, you know, I was a, I was a rural county attorney and they had resources for me there. Uh, my experience as Utah County Attorney has been just the opposite. So on day one, I'll be reaching out to my colleagues in the 29 counties and saying, you know, what can I do to help? I know your, I know your situation, I know your plight. And let me, uh, help the, with the resources of the Utah Attorney Generals to help, to help your job, uh, be more smoothly. The, uh, um, I, I have to say that one of the things that I love about this convention process and this delegate process is the ability to interact on a very, you know, on a, on a deep level with delegates. I'm getting emails every day where people are asking me deep questions. I love questions from, you know, like, like Kent sent, saying, you know, well, you seem inconsistent on this, you seem inconsistent on that. I really love the ability to have a dialogue. And I, I, I'm so grateful for your, uh, I'm so grateful for your willingness to, uh, participate in this process. Grant says, uh, do you know how the pill payments Utah receives compared to the grazing fees and other payments as the federal government receives for the same lands? Is Utah better off receiving those fees and paying the pill, administration cost of land than is getting the pill? I, I don't know the dollar for dollar number for you, but I would a lot rather have the money. I, I'd a lot rather have the land and the money, um, quite frankly, if, if, uh, if we had that, if we had that option. In the, in, in the last, uh, in the last few minutes before, uh, we go to, before I wind up, I want to ask you to go, if you haven't done that, if you haven't done the survey, please go do the survey. I've just changed my backdrop, as you can see, uh, because I want to end, uh, with where my effort at reforming the United States criminal justice system began. I was in a, uh, I, I've been serving, I've been the, the, the county attorney, I've been a criminal defense attorney in, in America. And I was sitting in a, in a jail cell with a criminal defendant who'd just been given a very lengthy sentence. And I was, I was jaded and I was burned out and I, I needed a change. And so I left the practice of law in 2004. And I accepted an assignment with the American Bar Association, uh, along with my wife, who was also a lawyer. And we took our six kids and 43 pieces of luggage to Kiev, Ukraine to help reform the Ukrainian criminal justice system. And we got to Ukraine, um, we got to Ukraine 10 days before the Orange Revolution of 2004. The Orange Revolution of 2004 is depicted in the picture behind me on my screen. It, it's where, it's where the, the government, uh, poisoned the opposition candidate, rigged the election, and, and the people rose up, uh, against its government to say, you know, we want a representative government and we want to be more closely aligned with the United States and Europe and not with Russia. And I sat there, um, in this square. And, and I don't know how many people are depicted in the picture behind me, but there were, um, on, on the day after the election, Viktor Yushenko, who'd been poisoned by his government, came and stood on the square and said, we've had our independence for 13 years from the Soviet Union, who have never had freedom. And I'm not going to leave this spot until they carry me out in a box or until we have our freedom. And I'm elected and I'm recognized as the president of Ukraine. Well, we saw this unfolding in front of us. And within a matter of about a week, there were several hundred thousand people in the square. And it, it was astounding to me to see, um, just, you know, young and old and, and, you know, male and female, all kinds of people from all walks of life who were, you know, just absolutely, uh, willing to do whatever they had to, 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 to get their freedom. And the government kind of freaked out. The government, um, and I'll, I'll show you this. Um, you know, there's a much younger version of me in that square. Because my office was just around the corner. And, um, the government sealed off the city. They, they, they cut off the rail traffic, they cut off the bus traffic. They started fabricating newscasts. And, uh, there was one woman there in that square, somewhere in that, you know, among all the protesters that would protest by day. And by night, she would go deliver these, these falsified newscasts. One day she said, I just felt dirty and I knew that I had to do something. And, and so she, um, went into the news station. She put an orange ribbon around her wrist, hid it in the sleeve of her shirt. And when the news started to, started to broadcast, she pushed her, her arm out and she said, I'm speaking to the death of Ukraine. I'm sorry that I am interpreting, that I have been interpreting lies. Our country is in revolution and our president is Viktor Yushenko. Please tell all of your family and friends and come to the Capitol, come now. And then she said, I, I don't know if you will ever see me again. Well, her name was Natalia Demetrik. And Natalia Demetrik unleashed a force across Ukraine that went through the death of Ukraine. And within a matter of, uh, about 10 days or two weeks, there were, uh, almost 2 million people in, in that square. And they, they took over the square and they stayed there for six weeks until the government agreed to new elections. And, and Viktor Yushenko was in fact sworn in as the president of Ukraine. Something happened to me during that experience. Or I recognized that I have never truly appreciated the benefits of my freedoms. And I learned in Ukraine that the basis for my freedoms are in the criminal justice system. That the foundation of my freedoms is in the establishment of the jury trial, where, where people make decisions. where, where people make decisions, not government makes decisions and not elected prosecutors like me. And, and so I determined in Ukraine on this square in 2004, that I would do everything in my power to build freedom. And after 14 years of doing it in Ukraine, I realized that I didn't need to go halfway around the world to do it because I have problems right here in my own county, in Utah County. And so I ran for Utah County Attorney and won. And I'm reforming our system here in Utah County. But now that I've been in office for 14 or 15 months, I realize that true reform has to happen at a larger level than just one county. And so like Natalia Demetrick speaking to the death of Ukraine, I, David Levitt, as the Utah County Attorney, am speaking to the Republican delegates of the state of Utah saying, I don't need to be Attorney General, but I do need to reform the criminal justice system and I can't do it without your help. I need your vote, I need your support, I need you to email your friends and your family members and need you to get the word out that our freedoms are at peril, we are at risk. We have to reform our criminal justice system and we can't do it uh, with one person that's going to take us all. And, and so I would encourage you to, you know, follow us. Like, comment, share, get the word out. Uh, if you, if you're willing to help us make phone calls, please email us and tell us that you're willing to help us because we're, we're facing an uphill battle frankly. You don't run for Attorney General, um, um, you know, and I mean, it's tough to run for Attorney, it's tough to run for statewide office. It's tougher to run against a two-term incumbent. It's even more difficult to run when you can't look people in the eye and shake their hand and let people feel who you are. And it becomes even more difficult when you take a five-week election cycle and spend two and a half weeks of it in bed with coronavirus. So we are behind the eight ball, so to speak. We need your help. We would, I would appreciate your vote, but also I would appreciate you spreading the word. And uh, you know, because this convention is it. I, I, I didn't plan on running for Attorney General until mid-February. Uh, I, I, I believe in the convention process. I, I, I got no signatures. I've got to get to 40% to get to a primary and I need you to help me get there. Uh, and if you would email us at david@davidlevitt.com, um, tell us you're, we'll, we'll give you some things to do if you're willing to help. Uh, we're at an hour right now. I just appreciate so much your willingness to join in. Uh, we're going to be having other town halls, we're going to be having some guests in the, in the next, you know, toward the end of the week, uh, that I think you'll find fascinating. So please look for our emails and tune in and, and uh, if you have other questions that I haven't answered, please, please send me an email and I'll do my best to answer them and we'll, we'll hopefully have a chance to visit at some point in, in person. Uh, thank you so much and have a great afternoon.